I wanted to look at for a minute.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Thanks Derek.
August 26th meeting of the Riley County Commission to Order, please everybody join me in a place of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good night.
Some were deciding to come back with vengeance.
Lord.
Oh, yeah.
I never what August is supposed to.
I get it. Yeah, we've been pretty lucky, at least um, at least Saturday's supposed to only get up to eighty-six.
That's good.
Probably tolerable.
That's good for the day, right?
Correct.
Cool.
So, yeah, so that sixteen game will probably be in the upper seventies.
Is that what it is, at six-ten?
I think so, yeah, six, six-thirty. Yeah, it's game week.
Yay!
Yeah.
Yeah.
Best time of the year. Okay, well, we'll start off with some public comments this morning. I know you've got some news.
I do have some news, that's, I'm here actually on behalf of the Treasurer's Office, Danny Lenz, I'm an employee at the Treasurer's Office, here to remind our citizens that anybody whose last name begins with letters M and O, your due this week, your vehicle registration is due by midnight on Saturday. And as a reminder also, our office hours currently are Monday through Thursday, seven-thirty to five, Friday, seven-thirty to noon. So we look forward to seeing the citizens who are expiring.
Thanks. The other public comment this morning.
Well, no surprise, I'd like to ask the board to set an executive session as the last item on the agenda.
We had an executive session for the last item on the agenda.
I would second that.
The meeting seconded adding executive session as the last item on this morning's agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, same now, we'll close off the public comment and move on to Commissioner's comments.
They weren't waiting to hear me?
They're rushing out. Tell the people you're on the street.
Oh, okay.
Just the opposite effect of me of hunting.
Okay.
Well, I had a quiet weekend, tried to do a little bit of yard work early in the day to beat the heat and then stay in the air conditioning hall.
That was good.
Okay, well, let's see, Thursday afternoon, I had a short meeting with Vern Hendrix, with the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, to discuss childcare and the incubator program they're working with, those other things, so it was a good meeting. Later that afternoon, I had a lengthy discussion with Bryant Parker regarding the Keats wastewater system. Um, Friday, I spent quite a bit of time here in the office catching up with the week, following up on phone calls, emails, going over today's meetings and documents and sorting out some other information. Um, this weekend, I did yard work early Saturday morning, cut the grass and all the other things, and mainly did indoor projects the rest of the weekend, and I'm looking forward to the start of football season this week. That's it.
Okay, well, that's for me, Thursday afternoon, I opened in on the Council of Foreign Affairs State and Local Officials webinar, this one was, I have a bit, twenty-twenty-four United States Presidential nominations. James N. Lindsey, Senior Vice President, Director of Studies, and Maurice R. Greenberg, Chair of the Council of Foreign Affairs, discussed the party nomination process as well as the electoral process here in the United States that makes up the presidential elections, and then they discussed support foreign policy views of each candidate as well as their running mates. Um, question and answer session followed that discussion to wrap up said webinar. Uh, Thursday afternoon, I had the first crisis intervention team meeting in quite some time here at the Board Chambers. We discussed the summer CIT training that took place here in Manhattan, CIT International that took place in Baltimore and Maryland. We also discussed how we can better, uh, do some better messaging for the new nine-eight-eight hotline, and working with the PIA group to give a consolidated message possible so people are better aware of that and what that entails. Uh, we also discussed how we can get mobile crisis up and moving forward, and discuss some other basic challenges we're facing in terms of crisis assistance and mental health here in the region. Um, also happening on Thursday was the announcement of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Flint Hills, uh, regional leadership class, and I really need to learn how to spell better, it's just, I can get them horrible here. Anyway, I'm very excited to have our very own Tan Ki Lin, who you just heard from, from the Treasurer's Department, and Evan McMillan from the Public Works Department is members of this year's class, so congratulations to both of them, and I'm glad to have him representing Riley County for the next year. And then lastly, I'm gonna give a shout out to the Zindale Community, after two years of hard work and effort, they finally got their community pavilion opened up yesterday. Now, work still continues on raising the necessary funds for a new community center, that's gonna be the tough lift, but, um, this is certainly a wonderful, much-needed addition to the community down there as well, so, uh, chose a really, really hot day to do it, but I guess that's just what you have to do, so, anyway, that's all I've got.
Ready for business, Commissioners? Need a motion to sign Standing Up Together, uh, to promote mental health in construction proclamation.
Um, I would make a motion to sign the Standing Up Together to promote mental health in construction.
Second.
It moved and seconded to sign the Standing Up Together to promote mental health for construction proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
All three please sign, and John, if you'll see on your printed out copy, it is not on the press conference, but it is supposed to be.
Okay.
It has been added since then.
Okay.
Next Commissioner, need a motion to approve mobile device reimbursement request form?
Move to approve the mobile, mobile device reimbursement request.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the mobile device reimbursement request form, all in favor?
Aye.
Eric, please sign. Any changes to the minutes, Commissioners?
Thank God Cindy knows how to spell.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Riley County Commissioners, as written for August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
It's been seconded to approve the minutes as written from the August twenty-second meeting of the Riley County Commission, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, the press conference, look, uh, any items for next week's press conference, Commissioners?
We won't actually have one though, will we?
That's true, I keep forgetting that on that Monday, yeah, so I guess it'll be two weeks, two Mondays from now.
I don't have anything for it either.
How does tentative agendas look, Commissioners? Definitely do. Okay, next Commissioner, you have John Ellerman at nine o'clock. A little break.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Maybe.
I'm sure there probably are. Yeah. Yeah. It's not really being said.
Just trying to swab the bubbling out.
Yeah. Yeah.
John, you should have mentioned that you were at the community allocation day on Wednesday.
Oh, I did, I did on Thursday.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize it was stacked up meetings, so.
We have, we have Monday, uh, meetings on Mondays and Thursdays, yeah, I did mention that, yeah.
That was, it was neat, hopefully they can get more involvement next year, it just kind of seems to grow very small increments.
Yeah, last year we had kind of a round robin tables and it was hard to count everybody, this year I thought of,
Yeah.
thirty percent more maybe?
I don't think quite that much, but it looked like it, yeah, yeah, it was, it was good.
Yeah.
I know initially, I was doing that, I don't know if you knew I did that position for a while.
Oh, yeah, you were there when I was on the Social Service Board back in fourteen.
It always seemed a little bit fuller because a lot of the agencies came and sat there too.
Uh, gotcha.
Made it look a lot different.
Yeah.
It's, it's getting there, and I, I appreciate you guys,
Yeah.
doing stuff again as the county.
Yeah, yeah, we've had fun with that this year so far. And we've got a few more days left, but.
And that's always the issue, is if you have fun with it.
Yeah.
They do well, I mean, the city used to do a lot of things with it, and that's kind of the trunk down, but I mean, they used to have, like a luncheon that they put together, a potluck thing down in City Park and their.
They're doing, whichever department raises the most, I'm buying lunch for them.
Nice.
And so, that'd be fun, and then we tend to like a bake sale and, um, yeah, all kinds of other sort of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just kind of creates some interaction competitive.
I think for a lot of people, it feels good to be able to, to do that too, you know.
Especially in small increments.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what's cool about that organization is, I mean, you can make an impact for a dollar paycheck.
Yeah.
Everybody will do it.
She comes back, it's like, they say. We had a, we had some, um, but it wasn't, it was merely for shares, it's a council.
So you can just.
Well, yeah, we'll see how it goes.
Hey, you place Thursday?
Yeah. Supposed to be raining Thursday night.
Ah, yeah, I did hear that, did hear that.
Well, it might, this might be the last of the hundred debris days.
We can only hope.
Yeah, you do. We still have, still have September. Come hoping, I'm hoping.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, last year.
Maybe even a sneaky January, never know.
That's in California this past week, they just had a four-inch snow.
I saw that. It was near a mountain.
When's the last time that happened?
Yeah, I don't know. Four inches, that wasn't just like a little.
No.
Little bit.
First time in like eighty years or something? Is that what I, I think that's what I saw.
So my son always says, like, this year's weather, having had so many mild days and stuff, and that snow, but yeah, global warming.
Where are we supposed to park if we want to go to Hale Live or anything?
I think same place.
Same place, you can walk all the way over.
Mm-hmm.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
I will, we might not be able to make it. I didn't bring my walking shoes.
I intended to go, but I don't think I'm gonna be able to make it.
Yeah. Um, the, the intergovernmental, then actually start till noon, the panel will start till twelve-thirty, so. May make that.
May make that.
Well, I'll go ahead now.
Intergovernmental?
Yeah.
I was trying to figure out how you get back and forth from Hale to.
Yeah. Especially during the school day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Good morning, John Ellerman Public Works. And this morning I'm here to request a backup position to our as needed security officer. He is a that physician usually is a once a month type of thing except for elections. Basically manning the door here, keep people where they need to be or direct them where they need to be. Check the halls when they're finished. So nobody's still left hanging around. When everybody else stays. With that being a that kind of position. The difficulty sometimes that person that makes other plans. Then to be able available for us, so we're asking for us alternate or backup for that. And just in case or in case I need it at some election time that maybe we need the second person there. It's it should work. It does work within our same budget that allow. Our budget allows two hundred and fifty hours. I don't think this. This position really has that many hours.
So this is not a contract labor because we have benefits budgeted in here.
Oh, if this part time, there's not really any.
That's that's what I was wondering.
Thirty hours would be the cutoff on that.
Yeah. They were lucky. They were five hours.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just put the benefits in there in case we need them, is it?
Yeah, there's something like capers, but I have to get them out of there. Did their checks, but. The social security and that with no other benefits.
Okay. I would make a motion to um. Uh, fill the backup as needed security officer position within the public works department slash facilities division.
Second. Then we can say it into a group of public works department advertised to hire a backup as needed security officer position. All in favor?
Aye.
All three please sign. Thanks, John. Next commissary, I'm Mr. Holman at nine ten.
Like sure.
Steve was going for. His retina check. And he was telling me yesterday, he says, oh, I'm going to do it. I said, I'll be happy to take it. Yes.
Mm hmm.
And um. And he can just check. He said, yeah, they're gonna tell. Take me because I know the last time they I was there. I couldn't even see it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Even one eye. It's like I'm going there Wednesday. Wednesday morning, right? Those retina associates down there are really good.
Well, are they?
Yeah. The only one up the state.
Hey, you lost one like their main defensive guys, AD tackler or something.
Oh, he injured him. But I've heard.
Well, they were doing big hype. Advertising, come to Kansas City, come to Kansas City. They're playing there all year.
Everyone's gonna have to step up and prove all their hype now. No more talking.
Yeah.
Us included.
Yeah.
Uh, Blake and I are in town with my son and uh. Uh, a lavender Corvette pulled out right in front of us.
What a good that can be.
It's funny, Blake kind of laughed. It's kind of like you driving like an old man because that uh. Coming off Juliet turned right on to Bloom and he took it real slow and real wide. It was like you being extra careful, maybe not used to driving it yet. Yeah, because you sit so alone.
Maybe he's got to pay the insurance on it.
He was driving real wide. He took the corner and slowed.
And Brandon was a Corvette fan and he was. That was his car of choice and usually had never always a Mac when he had one and he was he hated driving it. Because it drove him crazy when there were little nicks and stuff in the paint or.
Oh, yeah.
Shopping cart rolled down all around to get him, you know, that kind of stuff.
Well, I haven't seen that one around town.
That was the only time I've seen.
I've never been burdened with driving around the show cars.
Oh, yeah. Everybody knows who you are is problem.
But that one in particular.
Yeah, kind of stand out just a bit.
So what's everybody saying about the game this year?
Just a warm up game.
Better be a blowout.
The next tier, the ones that are important.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to the third one.
The Friday night one?
Not a fan Friday night college football. Not a fan.
Was it on um? What channel is it on now?
It's on ESPN plus.
Plus, I gotta figure that out.
You don't have it. You'll have to get a subscription.
Have to sign back up. I drop it through after basketball.
Yeah, I dropped.
That's what I normally do, but Hulu picked it up along with Disney, so it's all combined into one package now.
Got it with Hulu.
Yeah.
Well, my daughter gets Hulu, so I may have to sign.
Or just use her password. You can let me say. You can hear me say.
She tried that once.
Get a call later today. We have war. This is. Attorney from Hulu.
I don't want to have to tell her to go ahead and do it because you said it is okay.
And I'll tell you. Now, you remember those, remember the.
It's the friends and family discount.
Go ahead. Morning commissioners, glad to see Holden, right, Ken counselor. And the Friday list you have again, maybe looks eerily similar. It's because it's the same one from last week. I get a chance to up to a file. At least I did not get a chance to submit the one that has been updated, so you're gonna see one with several updates. And the next one you see, you go ahead and answer the questions you get pending matters on here or anything else we're doing. Spending plenty of time, union contracts, systemic departments.
What happened with the um KAC legislative hearing?
Uh, um, that I cannot. But that you're talking about the you're talking about the policy committee. Yeah, that.
Did you just enter all that and they're gonna meet later?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun.
No, 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 I was you had me terrified there for a second that I missed the policy committee. Don't think I have.
No, I was trying to. I think that's how it works. You usually make those submissions and then they usually meet in September.
Yeah, it's it's on a quick schedule. This year, much like the deadline for submissions.
The deadline was Wednesday. The meeting was Thursday.
Yeah. Surprise.
I would say if that happens, then I know they meet again.
I think they're bored me to discuss that on Wednesday.
This week.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. And that is that on the structure mix of this, you can come in with presentations that.
I think that's what he's thinking because he said he's planning on being there all afternoon.
Yeah. So I don't know if they're if they're gonna, quite frankly, if they are having it this Wednesday and assuming they're allowing participation. I would probably go and direct Brian along too, kind of introducing to members on the committee, holdovers. And get a chance to see their thing live. Even if it's online and it's not bad to show up in person.
I think the current president of that board actually just lost his primary, so I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I'm sure they have a process for replacing this. Ever usually any longstanding board has this has some kind of rule. Couldn't tell you what it is. But uh. If it is this Wednesday, we'll go to that if the schedule prevents, if not, we'll go to the next. And accomplish the same thing. And be glad to answer your questions you have. In the end. Thank you.
Fresh conference at nine thirty, commissioners.
Brian's first opportunity here when he's doing Wednesday.
Greg, the interviews on Thursday. See if that announcement's online today.
Policy.
No, uh, the case statement.
For what sort of a policy committee meeting is this one?
Excited?
You're down, you're alive.
Yes. Only because you should.
No, that worked anyway.
Oh, no, when the plan says it's John, I say how high.
And please.
So was that policy committee of the board still?
The entire board. It used to be different. It used to be a subset.
And or board.
I think that's right. I think that's what they've done. They've done business and then they've moved on to policy. Yeah, and you can actually sign in usually early. Nice. They've got Zoom available. I'll double check.
Okay, I but I I'm uh whatever it takes, I'll be there too. Appreciate it.
Reliant.
Fisherman. Do you have a second? I just I just my exercise in. Yeah, that's right. You just need to get up and down. That was Ron Frank Williams as the president. Was the EMS director of Boer County.
The new?
No, they do it every year. I didn't realize, it's a pretty big board. Sixteen, nineteen people. He was.
Then saying, when everybody's got an interest. True operation.
Yeah, I will. Yeah, I would do nothing but, you know.
Riley County, you know, well, two insured, you know?
No, no, you know, I'm one of those, after my kids are out, I just don't keep real good track, you know, so, once the grandkids get there. Then I'll pay close attention. Putting closer attention now, I've never had any kids do it in wrestling, cause my, one of my son-in-law's wrestling coach up there. So.
Yeah.
Actually pay more attention to that, and my nephews are really good wrestlers for them up there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very unheralded sport.
Yeah, it is, it is. Until you make it big in college, and they always emphasize how well, you know, that wrestling did for them in their football abilities, you know? Especially linemen.
Where's he at? Somewhere in New York, I think, there's the Olympic wrestler that. Uh, collegiate, no, he's a collegiate, I don't know if he made Olympic, but converted to a defensive player.
I think he might have been Olympic, cause I heard about that story too, like a month or so ago.
Well, their balance and footwork is so amazing.
Yeah, he just stopped then. Wrestling and then went to, I think he did really well with him, I fix, and then he went on to try and out professional football.
Yeah.
Had to sort of leverage and.
Leverage and balance, especially for those big heavyweight boys.
Mm-hmm.
Me.
It's always alignment, they say it really helps them so much, right?
Yeah. And their core strength. We're at nine thirty, so there's time for our press conference this morning. We've got. We're downloading.
Is he, is he in his office? Buzzing?
I think Brian's.
Not, so it's Brian's fault.
It is.
Oh.
Okay. Well, we'll wait for our other commissioner and then we'll take care of it. Remember to give. Right? Yep. Okay. So we have the Standing Up Together to Promote Mental Health and Construction proclamation. Whereas the construction industry workers brave extreme weather conditions, work tirelessly, and often shoulder the weight of immense responsibility to build the infrastructure that sustains our society. Whereas construction laborers are at a greater risk of suicide than any other professions. According to the CDC, the rate of suicide among male construction workers is four times that higher than the general population. Whereas twenty twelve and twenty fifteen National Violent Death Reporting Systems data in seventeen states indicated the major occupational group with the highest male suicide rate was construction and extraction. In twenty sixteen, forty-six points, sorry, forty-three point six, and then for twenty fifteen, fifty-three point two. Whereas according to a twenty twenty report from the Centers for Disease Control, CDC, the construction industry has the highest rate of all major industries in the United States. Whereas a twenty twenty survey of construction workers found that fourteen percent of workers struggled with anxiety, and nearly six percent struggled with depression, based off of symptoms or medical use. Whereas the Associated General Contractors, AGC of Kansas, the Chamber of Commerce for the Kansas Construction Industry, and its partners have created the Kansas Construction Safety Network to help promote mental health in the construction industry. Whereas the construction companies in the Manhattan area representing Kansas commercial, industrial, residential, and utility construction contractors and their employers have engaged in the following public-private partners. Kansas Occupational Safety and Health Administration, or OSHA, Kansas Mental Health Association, Honey Mental Health, and Katie's Way. Whereas the Construction Safety Network has created a website, www.kasconstruction safetynetwork.com. Can I get that right? Okay. Kind of all one word there. Um, that provides resources associated with drug abuse and mental health and is accessible by the general public and the business community. Whereas the Kansas construction industry is proud to work in partnership with the above public agencies and bring in attention to the critical challenges associated with mental health and the community. Therefore, we all invite the residents of Riley County and the surrounding area to join the construction industry as we bring recognition to mental health in the construction industry and proclaim Wednesday, September sixth, Mental Health and Construction Day. This is the Board of County Commissioners and signed by all three of us. Thank you very much. Yeah, feel free to say a few words, I'll move, send a couple pictures with you on too.
Okay. How's it going? Actually, Vivian's. Mark Lawson, uh, just one of the many great members within the community of construction individuals uh, trying to put this on for mental health awareness and opportunities to uh. Bring about awareness so that our workforce knows that there are options for them to seek help if they need it, and also for workers to be able to help identify those that may be in need. We have an event on the sixth at three thirty, three fifteen. Um, and up on Anderson Avenue and one of the foundation buildings. Um, please join us, it's the new one, uh, on.
Nineteen sixteen?
Nineteen sixteen. Uh, yeah, so it's a new seat warden, uh, building, so. Um, and invite you guys to please come and see what's going on. Um, we'll have a little panel discussion and provide awareness materials for those in attendance, so. Thank you again for recognizing us, um. There's too many partners in this list out right now, and I'd forget somebody and feel bad, so just know it's from the Riley County area, so thank you.
Okay. Perfect, Catherine came with that, she had a little, I'm sorry, thank you. Big smiles, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably, okay, yeah. Oh, hold on, dude. We got, we got.
More press conference items.
So I'll make this quick, it's kind of elegant, all the quirks, I have a few announcements about um, road closure Wednesday, the August eighth, or twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, Holman Road will be closed from the day to replace a crossroad pipe. Um, north of Fairview Church or Holman Road will be closed from University Parks to Fairview Church. Um, reminder that the over road is closed today through the thirtieth. Uh, to replace the concrete over in there. Um, and the last one. The transfer station will be closed on Labor Day, Monday, the second. Thank you.
Okay. Now you're good to go.
Good morning, Megan Lewis with PD Corrections.
Good morning.
I'm here to give my monthly staff update. Got a little ahead of myself. Okay, we're gonna start with juvenile intake and assessment. Juvenile intake has been extremely busy the month of July. We had twenty-five intakes in Riley County and two in Clay County for a total of twenty-seven, if you can look before the month of June, we had a total of fifteen. So that was over fifty hours of clocked hours, um. We had ten kiddos that were returned home in almost the same amount that had already been in DCF custody in St. Francis County, so. What that means for our workers is we, we're on the clock a lot more, we have to wait for those workers to show up to Riley County to take custody of their kids and it ends up in fight the, fight the battle sometimes. Um, there's times where they're supposed to respond within two to three hours and then it'll take them five to six hours to come. So that's impacted our hours as well. The rest of our services with intake have stayed pretty much the same. Um, in addition, we have hired one new on-call officer and she has started training, she's actually training today. And then we've extended offers to two more and we're waiting for the process for them. We continue to meet once a month and try to improve our process to make it more efficient. In July, we did have two kiddos that were placed in protective homes for four days and we provided the stipend from the Daniel Heating Foundation of two hundred dollars for those two kiddos, as well as the one hundred dollar gift card for essential items. Westview continues to support us with their clothing bags, and that's wonderful. Our youth court immediate intervention program is booming, just like intake, we have forty-five participants as of July, which is an increase from June, and then total participants with our jurors, everything is seventy-four, so Mr. McNatt continues to stay busy. And then he also has eleven individuals on supervision. For our adult services, our population is up there as well, um. Just a little from June, but quite a bit from May, so we're at ninety-six in the month of July. And we have a remaining balance for our Carolyn Pine grant of five hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-one cents, that has started around seven thousand and that was back in November of twenty-two. So we have really spent that down and our next application process will start October first, so we do plan to apply for that as well. Um, to continue to support our clients with birth certificates, IDs, housing, transportation assistance. For drug corps, and we had Jesse Hubbard, who's here today, she did travel to Washington DC in August to attend the financial management training seminar that was assisted by the Department of Justice, and she learned quite a bit of information. Um, we did find out we're doing a few things wrong, but also that we're doing some things right, we'll make some modifications and address those things as we. We have spent forty-four percent of that grant with thirteen months remaining, we did find out that we can apply for an extension for an additional year so that we can use some more of those grant funds that were already awarded, so we're gonna look into that process um, to try to aim for that. We have twenty-two current participants and we do have a graduation schedule for September eleventh at three o'clock here in Riley County. And we would invite you to join us for that. And we would invite you to join us for that.
Good morning.
And KMSU requires us to develop annual budgets with our carryover reimbursement funds. And it does require that JCA and the PSC review and approve them. The year of four adult and juvenile. The carryover reimbursement dollars come from dollars from supervision fees and reimbursed drug testing fees. And FY twenty-four, we started the year with a little over seventeen thousand, brought in about thirty-two ninety-one and spent a really big chunk of that, twelve thousand fifty-nine primarily to supplement salary shortfalls. So we're currently sitting at four thousand three sixteen six three in our adult services carryover budget. We do have to budget to spend the entire amount, although we only spend what is absolutely necessary to make it through FY twenty-five. As board meeting meals and supplies have to be paid from carryover, money was budgeted for that line item and there are many money was split between training, travel and then the box supplies again with intention of not giving them, but we don't have to. And there are always twenty-second meeting, the PD Advisory Board approved the budget as presented. So now we're presenting it to you for your approval.
And moved to prove that this year twenty-five adult services carryover reimbursement budget in the amount of four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-three cents.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the fiscal year twenty-five adult services carryover reimbursement budget in the amount of four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-three cents. All in favor?
Chair, please sign.
You can go ahead.
Basically the same thing for the juvenile service carryover reimbursement budget. For juvenile services, we don't collect supervision fees, although we do for IIPs. That's the only difference in how we get money for those funds. We are currently sitting at twelve thousand five oh six fifteen in our juvenile services carryover budget and three thousand eight hundred twelve thirty-six in our IIP carryover for a total of a little over sixteen thousand. And again, we have to pay for our board meals and supplies through carryover funds. So that line item we are anticipating spending, but the other ones were just put in places where we needed to have it, but we won't get it. Again, this was once presented in our office twenty-second meeting to the JCA and we did approve it, so we are.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve the year twenty-five juvenile service carryover reimbursement budget in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents as presented.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve the fiscal year twenty-five juvenile services carryover reimbursement budget in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Thanks, Jesse. Thanks, Megan. You too.
You. How long?
About thirty minutes.
On ten fifteen.
And I move the county commission, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman McKinley, and Commissioner Fokie recess on the executive session on potential litigation with Plancy Holman County Counselor, Ryan Parker, Deputy County Counselor, attorneys for the commission, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship and exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Open meeting to resume in county commission chambers at ten fifteen AM. Rich Fargo, Rutherford County Court, Rick Phillips, Budget Finance Officer, Elizabeth Ward, Human Resource Director will be present for a portion of the executive session to present factual information.
What a second that.
And it's been seconded at the county commission, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman McKinley, and Commissioner Fokie recess into executive session on potential litigation with Plancy Holman County Counselor, Ryan Parker, Deputy County Counselor, attorney for the commissions, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship and exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And we'll be needing to resume in the county commission chamber at ten fifteen AM.
I would second that.
I move the board of county commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
Then moved to second the board of county commissioners come out of executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll smooth the record reflect no act, no binding action was taken during the executive session.
I would second that.
Sorry, no binding action was taken during the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great stop there.
I move county commission including chairman Ford, vice chairman Kinley and commissioner Pocky recess into executive session on potential litigation. Plan C Holman, county councillor, Brian Parker, deputy county councillors, attorneys for the commission which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the open meeting to resume in county chambers at ten forty-five. Rich Fargo, Raleigh County Clerk, Brittany Colts, budget finance officer, Elizabeth Ward, human resource manager will be present for a portion of the executive session to present factual information.
I would second that.
It's been moved in second to the county commission including chairman Ford, vice chairman Kinley and commissioner Pocky recess into executive session on potential litigation. With Plan C Holman, county councillor, Brian Parker, deputy county councillor, attorneys for the commission which should be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. An exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at ten forty-five AM, all in favor?
Aye. I move the Board of County Commissioners to come out of executive session.
I would second that.
I move in second the Board of County Commissioners to come out of executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll smooth the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
I would second that.
Sorry, no binding action was taken during the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great stop there.
I move County Commission including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman Kinley and Commissioner Pocky recess into executive session on potential litigation. Plan C Holman, County Counselor, Brian Parker, Deputy County Counselor, Attorneys for the Commission which should be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. An exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the open meeting to resume in the County Commission Chamber at ten forty-five AM, all in favor?
Aye.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded with the Board of County Commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded with the Board of County Commissioners come out of executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
I move the record reflect action should be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded as the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have nothing.
And that is the last agenda item I have within the intergovernmental and whatever's going on with that. So.
I'm not one to.
I'm not either.
So we don't need to adjourn after that. It's it's true.
You do not, so you can just adjourn now.
That's why I didn't care. I hurt my back.
I'm not feeling mine. I'm having some stomach issues today for starters. I really don't want to be out in the heat and.
I don't know if I'll go or I have to think about it.
So we don't, well, but we don't have to.
I was planning on it.
Originally was.
We gotta adjourn now instead of after the meeting.
Okay. Um. Okay, I make a motion to adjourn um the August twenty sixth meeting of the Raleigh County Commissioners.